Okay, we will call this meeting to order, regular council meeting for February the 28th. We'll start off with a land acknowledgement. The town of Innesville acknowledges that we are meeting on Treaty VII territory, the ancestral and traditional territory of the Blackfoot Confederacy, Kanai, Pecanee, Six Sika, as well as a Sutina Nation and Stony Dakota First Nation. We acknowledge that this territory is home to the Métis Nation of Alberta, Region Three, within the historical Northwest Métis homeland. We acknowledge many First Nations, Métis and Inuit who have lived in and cared for these lands for generations. We are grateful for the traditional knowledge keepers and elders who are still with us today and those who have gone before us. We make this acknowledgement as an act of reconciliation and gratitude to those territory we reside on. And just before we begin today, I know we're all aware of the invasion of Ukraine and horrified by what is taking place. So on behalf of council, our hearts and prayers go out to Ukrainian people. We applaud their unwavering courage and truly hope there will somehow be a peaceful resolution to this in the very near future. So we will now have the deputy mayor swearing in ceremony.
How appropriate that is.
Probably had his alarm set. So we'll move on to the agenda. So any additions or deletions?
Mayor Barclay, I have an addition. Okay, I'd like to add an agenda item with respect to the situation in Ukraine.
Okay, we will add that to five point four. Anything else?
Hi, yes, Mayor Barclay, under in camera, item 12.2 is property, Australia property disputes. We'll have a delegation from town lawyer via Zoom at four o'clock.
Okay, thank you. So if I could have somebody make a motion, please to adopt the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion, Mayor Barclay.
Thank you, Councilor Miss Harris. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to four point one, the regular minutes. Just have a quick review of those. I was going to mention Kara that I did not attend the Brownlee, I think under my name, it said I attended Brownlee. If I could have somebody make a motion to accept those minutes, please.
Mayor Barclay, I'm so moved.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Dunham. All in favor? And we'll just review the agenda and priorities meeting of February the 22nd. And I'll have somebody make a motion, please.
Mayor Barclay, I would make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Wing. All in favor? Okay, okay, we'll move on to five point one, a request for decision from CEO Becker on his chief administration report.
Thank you, Mayor Barclay. The report is there for your review. Focus area over the reporting period really is putting in a long weekend of family day, taking one day as vacation. Spent several days with council administration, scrap planning, that really made the name is a basis of the report. Certainly be happy to answer any questions regarding town administration or operations that are not outlined in this report.
Does anyone have any questions? And I would please ask somebody to make a motion to accept the report's information.
I'd so moved, Mayor Barclay.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Harrison. All in favor? Thank you. Next, we have the council action control.
If I may, Mayor Barclay, just on the item, policing and safe communities committee, it's highlighted in red. The community did have a member from representing youth at the last meeting. Talked to our legislative coordinator this morning and that name will come forward to you in two weeks' time with the name and asking for your appointment of the non-boarding member.
That's wonderful. Thank you. There's no questions and I please have someone make a motion to accept this as information.
Mayor Barclay, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Dunham. All in favor? And then go on to five point three, the mask use policy repeal. CEO Becker?
Thank you, Mayor Barclay. Just asking for council's consideration of repealing a a policy that was developed, approved by council December 14th, 2020, titled the mask use policy. The mask use policy is introduced by administration, as per council's direction. Approved by council in light of what the expectations of council regarding this facility administration office and the requirement of masking, as the government at that time is wrapping up their restrictions and getting their their ducks in order. In light of the announcement on the weekend, council's previous acknowledgement of following the mandated restrictions. And again, the removal, moving into step two of the restrictions, which allows municipalities in this case to adjust restrictions accordingly. I'm asking, asking council to consider repealing this policy effective midnight this evening.
Thank you. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'd be happy to make that motion, Mayor Barclay. That we repeal policy 2020 dash oh one oh, the mask use policy. In accordance with the implementation of the Alberta government's step to public health measures.
Thank you, Councilor Bates. Any discussion?
Just a quick one. Uh, yeah, I'll be speaking in favor of this just to let the gallery know, but I think if, if you know, in future months, depending on where COVID does go, we would introduce this once again. I think that's my question to all of us. Am I correct? Or would that be?
Well, we've kind of always followed the Alberta government policies. Health policy, municipal orders. So I guess if they came back and implemented the mask policy again, but we discussed it at the time.
Yeah, no, I just, I just want to ask on, you know, good governance, because it, you know, the policy was introduced during the pandemic itself. And the pandemic is not over. It's just, I think that at the end of the day, we want to be prepared if we have to implement anything else, correct? That's all I got to say. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Bates?
Yeah, just to comment, the CEO mentioned it, but that policy was specific to this building and back at that time, it was, it was recommended that all businesses look at how they were going to preserve their operations and that was how we chose to put up a bit of caution on this place and it was just this building. And I'm sure none of us can predict what will happen in the next few months and we'll be ready to figure that out when we get there.
Anybody else? Here we have a motion on the table, then. All in favor?
Mayor Barclay, before you advance to the next item, just looking at these partitions and in light of that last motion, would you be comfortable removing these partitions or maintaining these in place?
I'd be comfortable moving them myself, but how does council feel? Are you two, are you two okay? Okay, thank you. So we'll, we'll move on to five point four and Councilor Miss Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Barclay. As a town, I'd like us to help bring awareness of the horrifying and unprovoked attack by Russia on Ukraine and to show support for the citizens of Ukraine and the Ukrainian communities in Alberta and Canada. Just one of the heartbreaking and profound examples highlighting the tragedy that I read about yesterday. Our parents in Ukraine preparing for the worst by sending their children to school wearing stickers identifying their blood type. Therefore, I would like to make a motion that the town of Innesville raised the flag of Ukraine to honor the courage and bravery of all of its citizens demonstrating our report or support.
Thank you, Councilor Ferris. I'd certainly support that 100%. Councilor Bates?
Certainly supported. Do we have one? Do we know where we'd get one?
Get one.
We looked into procurement this morning. I believe Ken got us on the order for the next shipment that the the flag supplier receives, so. Thursday.
Okay, thank you. So we would probably put that where the town of Innesville flag is. Okay, do we want to put like a timeframe or just leave it? I don't know. Not sure what protocol is, but.
No protocol. It's up to council and you can maintain it there until further notice or or review it in a couple of weeks.
Do you like to do that, Councilor Miss Harris? Just have it.
Yeah.
Till we discuss it.
Bring it back up for discussion later. Yeah.
Anyone else like to comment? All in favor then? Okay, Carrie, thank you. And we'll move on to six point one, a request for decision on a sewer camera purchase with Director Kennedy.
Thanks, Mayor Barclay. So, yeah, I'm here to look for a recommendation to purchase a image inspection camera. So our current camera has become less reliable over the past few years. Becoming costly for repair as well as the downtime and time spent on working on it. The unit is used to determine the condition of our wastewater, stormwater, as well as our service main connections to residents. We submitted or requested proposal from five suppliers. The prices ranged from 70,476 up to 110,113 dollars. Administration reviewed the five selections and it is our recommendation to purchase the pipe tracker unit for the purchase price of $80,000. Because the unit comes with an onboard power system as well as a remote power available from the van, making it far more reliable. It also is a fully loaded unit, giving the operator more ability to manipulate the unit and gather better information on the pipe condition. The quality of the camera appears to be better and has off and was offered a significant rebate, bringing the unit within our budget. The rebate was offered as part of a case study to help the company show how robust and innovative their system is. The unit is under the budgeted amount of $90,000. So it is our recommendation for council to approve the purchase of the crawler unit and all the accessories from pipe tracker.
Thank you, Director Kennedy. Could I please have someone make that motion?
I'd so move, Mayor Barclay. We approve the purchase of a crawler camera with all accessories from pipe tracker for $80,000 to be funded by the utilities equipment reserve.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Harrison. Any questions? Councilor Harrison?
Thank you. Through to Director Kennedy, what are we going to do with the old one? I know it, is it repairable or is it just cost prohibitive or?
We'll probably maintain it in our unit or storage as it is usable as a backup, but other than that, yeah, it isn't probably worth much of anything. So we'll use it as a backup.
Okay, thank you. And just this little crawler, does it go down into the pipe and take pictures? Is that?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you said it in a manhole and then it actually crawls down the pipe.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. And we'll move on to the next request for decision, Director Kennedy, 2022 surface improvements.
Thanks, Mayor Barclay. So, yeah, in front of you is a recommendation to award the construction contract for the 2022 surface improvements. The project itself entails five sections of roadway that are requiring surface improvements. Forty-sixth Avenue, which was had the underground replaced last year. Fifty-third Ave, same, we did the utility replacements last year. Forty-second Street requires a mill and overlay. Fiftieth Street, North Service Road, again, mill and overlay. And then 52nd Avenue is a mill and overlay with about 50% of the curb and sidewalk needing replaced. So three of the five projects were in our asset management and 10-year capital identified as priorities. So we're just continuing on. The tender of the project was closed in February 10th, 2022 with four contractors submitting bids. Tender values don't include GST or contingency. Border paving came in at the lowest bid of 999,745. The highest bidder, Annie paving at 1,639,930. The tender evaluation was completed by Tagish Engineering. They didn't see any unbalanced items compared to the other bids. So they provide a recommendation to award to border paving. Total project with engineering contingent and 10% contingency comes in at 1,161,034.06. This is under the estimated project budget of 1,232,000. So it is our recommendation to award a border paving for the construction value of 999,745.51 cents. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Could I have someone make that motion, please, Councilor Wing?
Mayor Barclay, I would make the motion for council to approve the award of the 2022 Surface Improvements Program contract to border paving LTD for 999,745.51 to be funded from the municipal sustainability initiative, MSI and federal gas tax fund, FGTA.
Thank you, Councilor Wing. Any questions? See, it doesn't take long to go through the MSI. Over the MSI, right? Okay, all in favor? Great, carried. Thank you. And next, Director Kennedy, request for decision on aquatic center update.
Yes, so thanks again. Yeah, so in front of you, we did do a review of the Aquatic Center project delivery and funding options. So back in January of 2022, administration provided council with a summary of the reports and options reviewed to date. In brief, we evaluated five options, which included renovation of expansion and expansion of the existing facility. A new build option with three different locations and a new build with a field house option. The recommendations taken from that meeting were to proceed with a new build with an evaluation of the site selection as part of the schematic design process. Second was the design to include energy efficiency options, accessibility options, as well as a wellness review and use a target budget of 20 to 25 million. As well at that meeting, we looked at integrated project delivery as an option for projects, delivery and an additional information was to be brought back to council for information. I've attached a detailed comparison of the two types of projects, delivery systems, the IPD or integrated project delivery, as well as the traditional design bid build process. In brief, the following is a summary of the comparisons. So the IPD provides a higher cost certainty, a lower risk, full team, being the town, the architect, as well as the general contractor accountability and collaboration. But does require greater resource commitment by the town and an initial investment to complete the the validation phase or schematic design. The did, design bid build process does provide a quicker delivery of the schematic design, a lower initial investment with a caveat of depending on the size and diversity of the team. That's mainly because if we go with just an architect, that's just architectural cost. If we want to make it a more diverse team, that means incorporating a construction manager that just ups the cost, obviously. So we'd have to review that. But it does have a higher risk, greater cost uncertainty, larger contingency within costing, no financial implications on the architect for oversize or changes. And all the risk is on the general contractor and owner during construction. So I'll just hand over to Eric actually to talk about the financial impacts.
Thank you. So we do currently have a project sitting on the books for the design of a new facility, whether that's a new aquatic center or whatever. So, and that was approved during the 2022 budget deliberations for $300,000. So if council does decide to go to the IPD route, the increased cost would be an additional $300,000 for a total project cost of $600,000. This additional cost can be funded from the facility reserve. And then this would give the facility reserve an estimated balance of $735,000 by the end of 2022. So that does include the additions that we project to put into that reserve as well. So the preliminary budget that is being used in our calculations for a new facility is $20 million. And I say for the building of new aquatic center, but that is still up for discussion. There are multiple factors or multiple funding options, sorry, depending on how many grants are available. And any potential monies received from Redder County and any sponsorship opportunities. All options would likely include debenture, not only for funding of the project, but we also also funding any cash flow issues that we may have while the project is under construction. Because even if we have even 50 up to 50% funded through grant, we may have to front end that and we may not receive grant dollars until after the project is completed. We just don't know until we know what grants are available. So we did do two options along with annual payments. So the first option is with half being funded from external sources. So that is through grants and other funding opportunities. And the second option is with no funding support whatsoever. So I did do options from five years all the way up to 25 years. However, it's likely we would only be choosing the 20 or 25-year option just due to the annual payment that is required. So to make these annual payments, we would need to implement a tax increase. Currently, we invest $450,000 into the facility reserve annually. So there's two different options here. We can take that money and apply it towards the annual payment from our debenture, or we can continue investing that money into the facility reserve, but then we need to fund 100% of the payment. So with a 20-year payback, if we're going to use that $450,000, the additional monies that we would need would be approximately $268,000. Or if we do it for the 20 million, it would be $988,000. And then if we actually choose not to use that annual allotment to the facility reserve, then I just did the calculations for the annual payment and what the potential tax increase would be. Any tax increase that we would do, some of these larger ones, we would have to start doing that now and gradually increase, likely doing 2% to 3% per year until we get up to that point where we have a full tax increase, right? We likely couldn't do a 9% tax increase all in one year. Yeah, but it could be a good option to even do an additional increase this year to incorporate the first stage of of this building.
So I guess before we take any questions, so just after review of the two options and the financial impacts just reviewed, administration is recommending proceeding with the IP process up to the validation phase, applying for the grant for funding and putting the project on hold until 50% of the project or up to 50% of the funding is secured, at which time we would then do another review. During this time, we will need to slowly raise income, increase taxes to build the capacity within our budget to make the future debenture payments. Any increases in the taxes in the current annual allotment will go into the facility reserve and will be used to make the first and or second years of venture payments. So it is administration's recommendation to proceed with the IPD process, increasing the budget to $600,000 to be funded, fully funded from the facility reserve.
Okay, thank you, Director Kennedy. And Vickers, some question with this process. I know you've done a lot of research and spoke with Drayton Valley because they went through this process, but I'm curious about, I guess, the wording in the motion, like it's referring to the aquatic center. And this process that we may be entering into, will it help us decide what we should do? Whether we leave the aquatic center where it is, whether we renovate it, put a new one, or whether we try to do that and maybe a rec complex down at the arena with a field house or because I'm not sure that we're settled on that at this point in time?
Yep, Mayor Barclay, so yes, that will help us validate. The focus will be on a new design build. Now, will that new design build be with the ability for expansion? Tying in another building to it, very similar to what Drayton Valley has done. And that'll provide us that that detail and that comfort level of what does that mean? Is it 20 more million dollars or it'll give us that?
So we, so we've decided then on a new build for an aquatic center?
That was the direction we heard from the last meeting. I think it, council, it's really needs to confirm what the focus area is, what is that vision? You know, do we need to, will this process can be incorporated to define exactly what council's vision is associated to to new amenity or a modernization of a current facility? Or is it something different? So it's, it's certainly your guidance is important as we ask you to advance this process. So again, if it's for uncertain and this process does not include that, the ultimate vision of council, then certainly we need to go back to make sure your vision is captured.
I guess my question is with this process, if we're not quite settled, and I guess in my mind, the the last time we spoke about this, we kind of threw a number out there, 25 million. To me, that number was more, so here's the money. How can we make it work like with a recreation complex? And where does the pool fit in that? Is that, I mean, personally, I'm not sure I'm completely settled on a new aquatic center. I would love to be, but if that's all we can do for 15 years, is that the way we go? So I'm not sure if this process would help us with that, or maybe it's just me that's kind of all over the map on on this topic, because I know I am. And that's not helpful for sure for you.
If you like, we can go through, like, so one of the things we did present in regards to the five options is, is the review of the, yeah, if we didn't upgrade to the existing building as a review, we'd be in that $10 million mark. $16 million gets us within a new build. So that doesn't limit us to just a new build. It could look at that, yeah, availability of other options. And then, but what it did do is identify that doing a field house and an aquatic center for 47 was out of our price range. So, so I guess where we took the direction from, from council at last meeting was go within with what's reasonable within our finances, which is a new build. Then, and yeah, we haven't defined it will be here or what exactly the limitations are. But we do have a concept and money well spent on HCMA with a footprint of what that looks like. What it all entails at the end is still to come.
Councilor Bates?
So, yeah, I confused a little bit to it with it, but made myself a list of questions because most of my troubles in the past, because I didn't ask enough. When I look at the premise then of what, of what this is based on, it's kind of centered down on the funding to 20 million. So I think it's important that we, that's one number that it's important that we start to focus on if that's the number. You know, if that's where we go, because you can't just a few months from now, so, oh, it was 25, you know, because it doesn't fit the funding model then. I'm personally reluctant to tap the the facilities reserve to an amount larger than what the pool's share is, because we all know every facility we have is going to have needs. And I would hate to see us take the whole facility reserve and direct it to the pool. So that's just, again, it's just a procedural thing that doesn't feel good to me. And then I started to think about the time. And then I started to think about the time, the timing, so. If we were to start on this, and I realize the process part of it is to help us define what we're doing exactly. When do we think we would be getting to a. Finished product of an IPD or a D or a DBB, like when would that be a matter of months?
The timing would be for for a design bid builds, we would be able to have schematic design. Completed by this fall. In regards to the IPD, it would be more of a May next year.
Okay, so then as I think of those two things, so we'd have that done in either fall or May. When would we like, and this impossible question to answer, but it's still trying to vision. When would we vision that we might have half the funding in place? Because if it isn't for years. Those designs become. Obsolete and and or you'd have to. Do an update at least to get the money in line again, which might delay again. So those are all things that float around in my mind that make it hard to.
CEO Becker.
Thank you, Mayor Berkeley, the council base. I think part of that was to, you know, to access grants to have something that you can apply for. Most grant applications, you require some level of detail. Concept plan is not, it's usually too too light. You need to get into that schematic or detail design to apply for grants. That was kind of the idea. Also to move into council's financial modeling of other projects that have interest to you as well. So yeah, we want to put all this together, but the idea was to maintain that 20 to 25 million. And not to extend too far out, but move it to recommendation from administration and extend that process out a little bit more money. But the process is more inclusive. It's a team approached by people that you'd wish to work with. And you get a product or design fitting the true vision of the of the council.
So is it possible, Director Kennedy, that for CEO Becker? Once you start going through this process, maybe that pool turns out to be a little bit different than what we've seen so far. And maybe it's a $10 million bill or 12 or. That possible like through this process?
Absolutely, yeah, like that's and that's part of the. The details as we get into it in either process, definitely like either we deal directly with an architect. And we finalize that vision, or you work with an architect and a contractor and finalize that vision. Definitely, that's still part of the process.
Perfect, yeah, great. Councilor Highstead.
Your worship, I guess I'm I'm going to go back to your originally question. I don't think we have a motion on the. The on the floor as well. So do you, you don't want a motion on the floor or you want just this debate right now? That's first question.
We can chat a bit. It was more around the wording of the motion, like the focusing only on the aquatic center. Okay, I'm not sure if that should be.
Should it be similar, like should we use recreation leisure culture plan or use something like that? Is it, it does kind of zone in on one and my understanding from the the planet itself was to give us. Not only the aquatic center, but the whole vision that we may want for the future. So that's I had two questions. So the name of it as well as putting it on the table.
Definitely, it comes to us that is we can change the the name to recreation facility. But but one thing. We wouldn't not included in this is that full vision. So we went through that with H C M A to, you know, multiple versions of a full vision. So we have a concept of a full vision. This would be detailed towards a new design build. Now, can it be expanded? Yes, we can still look at that, but if the main focus would be the new build design.
So you want it to stay the same language?
CEO Becker wants to.
Just to assist, I guess the question would be to counsel. Although previous council formulated those options and had that level of detail. Certainly change the wording to reflect what you want it to be. But we want to make sure you're at that place where you are moving in towards defining that that vision. Are you there? Yes, no. If you're not, how do we get you there? We're under the pressure against the rest of administration, but that through the discussions. Feels like through the staff that focus has been more on the aquatic center. But if that's not quite accurate, you certainly reflect that and make sure you're at that place to move this process forward.
Can we change the the wording to like a recreation facility or something? But you know that, you know, that that focus is still kind of primarily on the aquatic center. Because that's our most urgent need, obviously, and.
It's certainly more vertically, but a recreation center, recreation complex. You know, in brackets aquatic center perhaps, but you're concerned if it the wording that as you feel.
Yeah, I just don't want to limit it. Maybe we get a, like I said, the, you know, budget on the pool comes in at 10 or whatever we decide. And then maybe we can look at doing something else and stuff. So anyway, does someone want to make that motion? And then we can continue on.
Want me to make the original motion?
Personally, like the wording changed.
Okay, so so the.
But it's up to you. You're making the motion.
Well, I know what the recommendation says, but you want the aquatic centerpiece out of that, right?
I'd like to suggest we discuss it a little more before we make that motion. And a couple more comments. So concern I have is that we take a couple of steps backwards. We've, and again, realize it was new council and, but I mean, we've visited the aquatic center. It has problems. It's got, it's the most likely. From every stage of inspection that we've done to fail versus it's it's end of life is the shortest. And. So it kind of started to center around the aquatic center plus whatever else we can afford. That's kind of the vision that I started to see and. I personally think when we get to emotion, it should also have the amount in it. The budgeted amount that we're looking, that we're trying to to aim towards. Because I don't feel comfortable with talking 20 to 25 and looking only at funding 20. And and I mean. We all know there's biggies going to come at us. With respect to land development, other things that are. And at some point we have to have that. Dialogue with all the priorities and. It all has to be worked together, but. So. I think the budget number needs to get in there and I would like to still. Debate with anybody if they think we should divert all of the facilities budget to to that. Because whatever whatever else we have out there for facilities are going to need money out of the. Reserve, you can't direct the whole reserve to it, I don't think.
I guess to clarify that, so we are looking for that decision. In regards to, we we thought we'd just provide you with some options of how the debenture would be paid for. Definitely not looking for council's decision on how.
When we look at the model that's shown here. If you, if you do look over there at that one, it's easy to convince yourself that you could. You could stomach a tax increase of that size. But that depends on you're tapping that reserve every year for that amount. So you have to look at it as complete. And and yeah, I know you're not making the final decision and that this gets us to. Somebody has to push the button someday and say, we're going to build that. And and so we're not doing that. We're deciding here. More or less, I think, to spend 600,000, I mean, an additional 300, we've already budgeted 300. And then whatever it takes to keep it modern for when we have half the funding in place.
Councilor Highstead.
Counselor Bates, you want to debate it? I'll debate it with you. Right now, it's a target budget. Doesn't mean that we're going to spend 25 million. And the the big thing for the 600,000 out of the funded facility reserve doesn't mean that we're going to spend. All that money to on the IDP process when we're building this, am I correct? That's that's a question I have, but the semantics that I'm getting frustrated with is. We should have a motion on the floor and then amend the motion. In my mind, so that we can move forward and we have clarity with the debate. And so this is, this is where I'm, we've been here, we know that we want to build a rec facility. As well as, and the big thing is, is the aquatic center is, that's what I understood, that was the focus. But we'd have all our options laid out before us, so. We're going to debate, let's give her.
Make the motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion as as read. That council directs administration to proceed with the integrated project delivery IDP process up to. The validation phase for the aquatic center project, increase the project budget to 600,000 funded from the facility reserve.
Thank you, Councilor Highstead. Councilor Bates.
Okay, so now that that motion's on the floor. I believe we should. Agree or disagree as to what the budget number is that's being worked towards to start with. And I would hesitate to go to the high one because usually. We end up with increases anyway. So it hesitate to go to the high one and then figure out how you're going to fund it. And there's a kind of a model here. I'm reluctant. To say that we would spend the entire amount that goes into the facilities reserve each year. On on this project. I would like to see. Something less than that, because you're going to need facilities reserved for other facilities. So that's one part of of it. And then the other part, we have to recognize. That we're likely going to have to, after we've created this. IPD, we're likely going to have to upgrade, update it a couple of times by the time we ever get the funding in place. And be prepared. To look to that first component as early as April as an additional. Tax. So you have to put all, you can't just duck parts of it and forget that's there because it's going to come back to you. That's that's, those are the concerns I have. I think we should hear from some of the quiet people.
Councilor Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor Berkeley. Just a question through to administration. I did, correct me if I'm wrong, I heard that Drayton Valley used this process when they evaluated their facilities. Question I have is what did they get for whatever and how long did it take them? To get to the point where the shovel was in the ground, because I do have that that concern too that if. And I understand that it's the chicken and the egg. You need something before you get the funding. And we need some funding before we can make these kind of decisions. So, you know, I I go back to my couple of my original comments about we, we got to take that leap of faith. So what did process the Drayton go through and what were some some of the? Stumbling blocks, if there were any with 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 Drayton Valley, what 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 was the learnings from from their their process?
Council Harrison, so my understanding from the meeting with the Drayton Valley representative. Was, yeah, they definitely went through multiple years. They went through the process. They had a set target. They went from evaluating a net zero to evaluating location. That all got clarified through the process process. Once they got the validation report, they actually shelved the project. Until they got their grant funding. Once they got their grant funding, they did a reabout a revalidation to with the team again. So the team still was together. That's your architect, your general contractor. And that validated again, in that validation, they actually dropped the project value. It went from 20 million to 18.5, something like that in that range. So once they did their revalidation, they were able to see that things changed. So and that would happen regardless of IPD or traditional design build. We would have to revalue as soon as it gets shelved, you revalidate afterwards. The benefit, I guess, is you have a team still together that you're comfortable with. So so yes, definitely, they they're going through a very similar process, I think, that we have in regards to location, full amenities. What is it? And but they did have a set target number. And that was, I believe, they originally started at 22 somewhere somewhere in that range.
So that to me would be the first thing, getting back to counselor Bates's comment around. Let's set a target. And then for the grant purposes, I think we need to move. The validation process will give us enough so that Erica or com director Vickers and director. Jenkins can apply for the grants. Is that correct?
Yeah, either either process, just to clarify, either process will get us to that stage. So even if we did the traditional design bid build, that will get a schematic design, which will get us to. Be able to apply for grants. So just to clarify that, that isn't that one doesn't get us there. They both do. It's just being clear that to get us to that stage with IPD, it's a bigger investment.
So what's the advantage?
Cost certainty. You have a team and as well as. Is is the risk, the risk involved with the project is it identifies the architect and the general contractor in regards to their profit. So that becomes ironed out right at the very beginning of this project.
Okay, yeah. Well, that to me makes sense. So that if we went with the IPD, it would, that would be ready for the fall or May.
That would be May.
May, and then what do you need for for grant applications? Because there's grants now that we could apply for. Not yet.
There's nothing we can apply for right now, and I believe there was. One of the comments from the budget there last week that the one is oversubscribed, the main investing in Canada infrastructure one. Hopefully, it would come out or something else will will come out. But yeah, we likely wouldn't be able to apply for anything until that validation report is in hand. That says what we're going to build and what it's going to cost.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
And I think at that time, you can go to other potential partners as well and and show them what we have, so. I guess I'm still mulling in my mind the the wording a little bit, recreation. Facility focused on the aquatic center because. And if we want to add a budget number in there, I don't know 20 million. Because I I don't think the aquatic center would be 20 million and maybe we end up adding some other things in there. As we did in a couple of the designs that we saw from H C M A, but you know, we don't so. Councilor Highstead.
Your worship, and the reason why I'm being a pain in the ass today is is because. I think it's it's well written, this this, the way it's delivered, because we also have the facility renewal plan in there, right? So it's part of the package. You know, we could change the wording, but I think we're complicating things. For myself, 20 to 25 million dollars, we know what we're really wanting to get at. I think if we're going to change to 20 or 25, we know. I I trust the IDP process because I've built buildings before in my previous role. And the design build doesn't have, you don't have the internal staff working one on one with those. That design build, and I think that's the direction of. Our operations manager, Stephen Kennedy, is, you know, the way you're trying to explain to us makes sense to me. Because I've had that opportunity and you have more clarity being in the driver's seat. Once you go to the design build, it's like you're on steroids. You're going. Because every time you're dealing with these people or contractors, you're you're under their, you know, you're you're paying out the money. I think that that's our best route. And as to the wording, I I I think that we're okay. I I think as I look at it, because we have the recreation facility renewal summary. I think that provides us an overview of where we're going, so. Just wanted to bring that up after I read through everything again. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Councilor Dunham.
I think for me, the thing that stands up most with the IPD is the higher cost certainty. I think the feedback and what I've heard from the community. When we were all campaigning to be on this council was that this is a high priority for a lot of people. Heard from a lot of people that they'd be willing to go with the. Heard from a lot of people that they'd be willing to go with the tax increase, but what that tax increase looks like. Obviously, is dependent is where we go. So I'm comfortable with the IPD, actually, I prefer that, and as far as the. Um, including the budget in that, I think it's defined below, I think the recommendation with maybe a slight amendment to say recreation philis- facility. Dash aquatic center or whatever, I'm comfortable with that, as far as the budget and how we fund this. I also would be much more comfortable with a percentage of the facility's budget going towards this, but I feel that that's. Something for down the road, I mean, right now, we're just talking about getting the IPD started. And then, I mean, obviously, that's over a year away until we. Have that completion, so I think we have a lot of time to debate. How we're going to pay for it, what that's going to look like, what the funding model is, but for now, like I said, I'm, I'm comfortable. With maybe just that slight amendment to aquatic center, to recreation facility and, and then go forward.
Councilor Highstead.
Oh, sorry, I left it on. I'm done.
Councilor Wing.
Um, I would actually, I do, I've had to give it a lot of thought. Probably because the tax increase piece kind of stuck in my, stuck in my brain. Because I don't think I'm ready to make that commitment at this point in time, but certainly support the IPD model, have worked with it as well. Um, it's, um, from the architect's perspective and the engineering perspective of the people that I know that have worked at that level. They have just said it's transformational for an outcome perspective, it works really well for, for that, those sectors of people that do in their work. So yes, I would, um, I would support moving forward with the IPD and. I, yeah, I think for clarity, it wouldn't hurt to have the aquatic center included in that. Um, in that motion, but broaden it out with having recreation pro- recreation facilities, project slash aquatic center or whatever, but. Um, I'm, I would vote in support of this.
Councilor McServes. Yeah, I'll just throw my two bits in, I also. Support moving with the IPD, I like the accountability that it, it brings, and I have just one question about that. Is, but, does it have consultation with council included in that, or like, how do, how do the? Decisions get made?
And we'll, we'll verify the, the valid, or the, the RFP process and the terms and criteria. Typically, um, on the team, it does not. The team is usually a, a senior administrator, uh, project manager, as well as our, our managers of facilities. But that doesn't mean that we can't, um, report back consistently to, to, to council. On the process as well as clarify. Workshops, public consultation, that type of thing, um, we, that'll all become in the, in the, in the RFP. Uh, which will bring back to council prior to, to issuance.
And that's May, just to clarify, that's May of twenty twenty-three, right? Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Councilor Bates.
So, I'm not. I'm not, not supporting the IPD process, it's, I'm still concerned though that. We need to know roughly, even if we proceeded with that today. Sometime in the next short time, w- we would need to have some kind of a. Facilitated leadership discussion that helps. Everybody on this side of the table to my right, and the, all these people that are going to be the team. Know what it is we're trying to build. They have to know what they're trying to build. And so I don't know when that would occur, but that needs to occur, and. We seem to be skating completely around the financial model that was thrown in here, because it's not pleasant to discuss it, but it's there. And for that reason. It is important, I think, the other points that I made, that it have. The twenty number is the one I'm suggesting, because that's the one that you could be paying up to nineteen percent if you're not putting anything in from. Yeah, and. How much do you put in to bring it down to? Somewhere between, it's somewhere between ten and twenty percent on twenty-year payback. That's what I'm reading, I think, this man. No, I'm sorry, four percent, if you put, if you put all of the three point five percent, if you put all of the, uh. Future. Facilities. In there, which I don't think you should do, I can't, I can't buy into that, and. Other questions we haven't asked. We've got several interest rates there. Is, 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 what is the current interest rate, if we were ready to do this today, what, what is it that we would be starting at?
Mayor Barkley through to Counselor Bates, so those interest rates are from, um, the province of Alberta, they're the ones who loan money out. To municipalities and those rates were current as of, I think Wednesday of last week. But they will change depending on the market, right, like in six months if.
Think they're going up. I don't have a wormhole over feeling with them.
Sorry, CEO.
I just like. To, thank you, Mayor Barkley, I'd just like to say, I think we've caught money the water here with, with two different issues. We're looking at an IDP that needs to be done. Right, to get us to a point where we can start talking about this, right? So I think we're premature. To talk about interest rates, because we don't know what it's going to be, I also, correct me if I'm wrong, heard. That once we get the validation report, we, we table that until such time as we get financing in place. And have another discussion and possibly another validation, did I hear that correctly?
Correct, that, that, that is our, in our recommendation is to, to table this. Unless, again, that's why we put the option of, unless at the end of validation, council's comfortable. With proceeding and with outgrants and stuff, that's why we included that, let's just go, so, but the intent was to put it on hold.
I think we have to proceed, because we don't have anything right now, right? And as long as you bring it back in May and say, this is where we're at, we have twenty percent of our funding. We can get this, we can get that, then we can have a discussion around wh- what we actually need to, to raise to. When these interest rates, because I, I certainly don't know where the interest rate's going to be in six months, two years. So personally, I think we're a little premature talking about. This page of, of, of the printout right now, thank you.
CEO Becker.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Barkley, and, and not to get myself intertwined in your, in your debate and deliberation and, and your motion. Um, a couple of options for, for my perspective would be. Um, to leave it as is without the financial component in it, because. There's other investment requirements that, uh, you or public have, you have to hear from administration with other. Other items, um, according to, to achieve your, your vision that has not been revealed, uh, finger strap planning. So however, the twenty million is, is a clear target that, uh. You're talking about, and it can be adjusted based on interest rates or material supplies. Whenever that is, it's next year, two years, now you, you can say that number and maintain that number, but you have maybe less. You're putting less into that facility due to the, the value of the money, or you can include that money as a initial. Um, projected costs of twenty million dollars as a, as an item to that you can communicate publicly and it's in a resolution, so both, both work. Um, however, the real number will come when you have the full package of, of those other investments that are yet to be disclosed. So, and you may say, we have fifteen million, or no, we have twenty-two million based on. What, what our decision-making is, so sorry, hopefully I didn't cloud it, but, um, either way it works. Um, but you may say initial projected cost, if you want the number in, but if you don't want the number in, that certainly is, is loud and clear. Twenty million dollars is, is an item of your interest.
Okay, so, sorry, Councilor Highstead.
Yeah, I was just going to propose a, an amendment in that rush, in the motion. I think that you're wanting to have, can you go, Kara, can you go to the original motion, sorry, I don't have my computer going. Um, so my understanding is the council directs administration. To the IPD process to validation phase for aquatic center. My amendment would be aquatic center slash recreation center project. And increase the budget to six hundred thousand dollars funded from the facility reserve. That's just a quick amendment.
Okay, thank you.
That's my motion.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Highstead, any further discussion, Councilor Wing?
Um, yes, Mayor Barkley, just one other question for clarification, please. At the same, at the same time that the IPD work is happening relative to the development of the project. Um, grants would be, the investigation of grants are going to be going on at that time as well. Um, any other, um, I, I'm assuming that. With, there's a note in here around sponsorship. I would assume that a complete development plan relative to any of that work will be happening over the next year as well, okay. Okay, I just didn't want that to be lost, uh, because certainly the operations of whatever we build afterwards needs to include all of that as well. So I don't want that, the operations to be lost. Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure we've answered Counselor Bates's concern though about. The, the anticipated cost of the, you know, the validation, the, the validation phase of a. Twenty million dollar recreation facility project or something like that, so.
Well, and I guess we were presented with the thoughts here that go with, and that's what. You have to be prepared. Eight months to a year and a half from now, whenever, like. I heard and even a, a recommendation that we consider tax increase now, because you can see where it's going. Um, and I'm not saying we should, but, um. You have to be prepared, the numbers are in here, no, you're not voting on that. But that's, that's lying in the future, and, uh. If you're not prepared to face that, then you might be, uh, investing. Three or six hundred thousand dollars in something that never happened. So you have to be prepared for that, that's. And I'd still like to see the twenty as being something in the motion, because otherwise. We haven't even centered on that, and when. When, uh, somebody down the road says, oh, we're at twenty-four, well, that's okay, because we had twenty, twenty-five. But all the calculations that we were shown that we haven't committed to, we're showing at twenty. So, I, I just, uh.
You can also make that decision at the time, though.
Absolutely, but you better be, you better be of a mindset to pursue this.
Councilor Highstead.
Yeah, I, I think, I think our administration did a good job, and as to twenty twenty-five, if we look at our, even the, um. I use an example of the paving that we just approved thirty-five minutes ago. That could have been one million, one point two or one point six million, right? So those are the, that's the balance that we're trying to play in this is, is there's a balance here and trying to make sure that we're. We know where the goalposts are, but we know that we want it to be close to the twenty million, Gavin, let's be honest. We'd rather have it to be fifteen million. But we know, at the end of the day, we're not going to know what interest rates are going to be in the next ten months or eight months. That's a reality, like, the, the low interest rates have changed, and that's just going to increase in the next couple of years for sure, and. It's just like, you know, oil. About a year and a half a year ago, the government didn't realize that we were going to have a, you know. You know, the oil coming in the way it is, so I think that the direction that our staff has given us is, is pretty much, you know. I- it's a moderate look at the future for us, and, and I think that if we're going to go down a rabbit hole, we're going to be here until Christmas. Deciding whether or not we're going to build a pool, we know that the pool that we have right now is, is not going to be suitable in the next few years. So we have to plan, and that's where I'm getting at. You know, talking on this quite a bit, is that we got to get there. If we're not going to get there in the next year and a half, we're going to be in trouble where we're, we're paying or trying to improve this pool, it's actually. And I said it to you guys before, it's old, it's, it's outdated, and I was, and that's me being polite right now, so. But if you want to change to twenty-five to twenty, go for it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think. That we're. Committed to this, I mean, it's certainly part of our strap planning discussion, it was one of our big rocks, and. This is the first step, very, still a preliminary step, but we have to take this first step in order for the other steps to fall into place, so. I'm personally fine with the motion the way it is, and I'm quite confident that we will deal with. The rest of it responsibly when the time comes and when we know more about grants and partners and those kind of things down the road, so. I, I'm fine the way it is, but up to. Up to council. If anybody wants to amend that term. And if not. I will call for. Who supports the motion that Councilor Highstead has put on the, the table, the amended motion? One favor? Opposed, okay, we've had one opposed. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Barkley, we do have our in-camera delegation, uh, online, and I'll just make a statement, if you don't mind, Mayor Barkley, to, to the folks that are watching online. Um, so those listening in on council's, uh, meeting, council's going, likely, I gotta make a motion to go in camera. Um, sorry for breaking up and into the agenda, uh, we will park you in a, in a room, a Zoom room. Um, I'm going to guess probably about a half an hour anticipating with our delegation, and then. Uh, we'll pull you back into the public meeting.
Okay, thank you, CEO Becker, could I please have someone make a motion that we move in camera?
I still moved, Mayor Barkley, that was moving camera.
Thank you, Councilor Harrison, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, we will move, uh, on to seven point one, a request for a decision on the business license bylaw with Director Vickers, please.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. So I'm bringing forth a report to present the, uh, new business license bylaw. Um, the last business license bylaw was updated on August twenty-six, twenty thirteen, and it has been due for a review. Um, so we have made our review and, um, is recommending the following changes to the business license bylaw. Um, one thing to note, I, it was attached, the original bylaw as well as the new draft bylaw, and we did make mark in yellow. The changes in the draft one, just so you can have a look. Um, so we did update, um. Following definitions, so a direct seller, so we did include that, um, and that basically is a, means a person who goes from house to house. Business to business, or person to person selling any merchant, merchandise and or service. And that means like you would have your security systems going door-to-door or. Or the furnaces go door-to-door, when was that, so that's what that means. Um, we did clarify garbage or yard sale and just clean that up, so that means displaying. And offering for sale of five or more items or goods, wear or merchandise. Um, other than boats, motor vehicles, recreational vehicles of any kind on residential, private residential property. We did, um, update the word market, so it used to say farmer's market in the old bylaw, and it was very restrictive. In the kind of markets we could allow to operate under that section, so we did change it to just say market. And it shall mean a farmer's market that is approved by the Ministry of Agriculture and Forestry and issues a food handling permit. By Alberta Health Services, HS, or a general public market providing for rent. Um, stalls, tables, or spaces to merchants displaying for sale, offering for sale, and selling goods to the public. So this does include farmers' markets, but also it could include a market of food vendors, of food trucks, or, or something like that, right? Um, we added the mobile commercial sales, so this is any person selling goods, food, amusements, or services from a mobile vehicle. Trailer, pushcart, or similar mobile structures designed for offering the sale of goods, food, or services. This is primarily food trucks or the guy selling the blankets and things like that. And one last one is special event, so that shall mean activities, including parades. Occurring in the town which are open to or intended to attract the general public. And will take place in or on publicly owned lands or facilities, and where various vendors may operate during the event. So we wanted to include that when someone was planning a large event, like even the lantern festival or something like that. We found that it was a bit harder, um, to entice vendors to come to town if they had to buy their own specific business license. So now the special event gets a business license, and it will encompass anyone that wants to attend, right? Um, so the next section was, um, section fourteen A. Um, and this, we added this section to give town administration, and this is the exact section. The ability to suspend, refuse to grant, revoke, or refuse to renew. An applicant's business license if they have contravened this bylaw or any other bylaw of the town. Or any applicable provincial or federal licensee permits, approvals, clearances, insurances, statutes, regulations, or acts. Um, so section thirty-one, we updated, um, and that's the fee exemption section, and we just added entrepreneurial youths in that section. Um, and then we also updated exemptions from obtaining a business license. So this is people who don't even need to come in and get a business license whatsoever, so a garage or yard sale. Um, a person renting a space within a market where the organizer of the market has obtained a business license and mobile commercial sales operating with a special event on public property. So section thirty-three to thirty-five, we did add the section for regarding direct sellers. Um, and I didn't type it out in there, but we can just go quickly look through it. Just give me one second. So we do kind of just give some guidelines about direct sellers. So one of the items is, is that they shall not carry on business between the hours of eight PM and nine AM. Just so we don't want someone knocking on someone's door late at night or really early in the morning. Um, and also they must display their company issued ID card as well as have a copy of the business license on their person, or the ability to show the resident should they ask for it. Um, then we also added section thirty-six um for mobile commercial sales. And just basically saying, so no one shall carry on business without a business license or be a member of a market or a special event. We added sections thirty-seven to forty-two to regarding enforcement and how they're able to issue municipal bylaw tickets. We updated, so section forty-three was in there prior. Um, but we did just update it so that if we as town administration make a decision regarding a business license and someone wishes to appeal that decision, it originally it said that it would go to the CAO, and now we've updated it to say to town council. And this would be primarily if we deny someone a business license, or we revoke a business license for some reason, then they can come and they have fourteen days to appeal to town council on that. And that's it for the bylaw. We did update um the fee schedule, so we did add a mobile commercial sales rate for the non-resident, because we found that a lot of the vendors coming into our town for, and most of them primarily were food trucks, um, did not, weren't willing to come to the town and pay the higher rate. So we thought this way it would be more feasible, more financially feasible for them to come to the town, and, and hopefully that doesn't limit them anymore. Um, and we did just add the early application discount in the bylaw, which it was not in prior to, so we just wanted that on, on the fee schedule to say that for the discount. And then under schedule B for penalties, the first offense was actually only two hundred and fifty dollars before. And we wanted to bump that up, so it was actually the same rate as the out of, um, out of town business license, because otherwise some of these people may come to town, well, just pay the fine because it's cheaper than getting a business license, so. So, so that's it. I, I am looking for a resolution for um that council accepts and gives um bylaws seven sixteen seventy-eight, twenty twenty-two, business license bylaw, first, second, and third readings.
Okay, thank you, Director Vickers.
Counsel Serres. Yeah, do I, I'd like to make that motion.
Make a motion to, uh, for first reading?
For first reading, okay. So I'd like to make a motion uh that we give number one, six, seven, eight, two, zero, two, two, business license bylaw first, second, and third readings, first reading. Okay. First reading.
Okay, any discussion? Um, just one thing, Director Vickers, I think it's under peddlers and hawkers. That section, um, some of the verbiage in there refer to his, like a, there was fishing. Don't have in front of me, but just trying to kind of gender neutralize the language, I guess, um.
I do believe that the, the pecker hot, peddler, hawker part has been taken out. Sorry. Good to be quoted again, I think. Anyway, the peddler has been replaced with the direct seller and the mobile commercial sales.
Okay, was in, I guess, the, what I have in my, my binder here, okay.
And, and before we bring it forth for signing, we could make a double check through and make sure that there is no gender specific verbiage in there and just relate to either a person or a business or, or so on.
Perfect, thank you. Counsel Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley, through to Director Vickers. Uh, scenario, market and main, we have a number of vendors in there. Would each vendor need to take out their own, or is it under the market of main to big business licenses?
So Mayor Barkley through to Counsel Harrison. So yes, so the market on main. Well, they're run by us, so they're, we're exempt from our own bylaw, but should it be organized by a third party, they would require one business license. And then they determine how they deal with all of their vendors, whether they don't charge anything, or they charge five dollars, or whatever it is. That's between the market holder and the vendors that they hire.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Serres, sorry, okay. Okay, so we have a motion for first reading, all in favor? And I will ask someone to make a motion for second reading, please.
I move that we uh give second reading to bylaw one, six, seven, eight dash twenty twenty-two for the business license.
Thank you, Counsel Harrison. All in favor? Okay, and we will have someone make a motion to go move to third reading.
I'll make the motion that we move to being able to give third reading to business uh license sixteen seventy-eight, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Counsel Bates, all in favor? And we'll have some make a motion for for third and final reading.
Mayor Barkley, I would move certain final reading for business license bylaw sixteen seventy-eight dash twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Wing. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. And we'll move on to seven point two, request for decision with the two thousand twenty-one fourth quarter financials with Director Vickers.
Perfect, thank you, Mayor Barkley. So I am here to present the twenty twenty-one fourth quarter financials as well as the dispersment of the twenty twenty-one surplus. Um, so each year, administration presents quarterly financials for council to review and approve. Uh, the financials currently presented are for the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-one, and that is January first to December thirty-first. We have reviewed the financial information being presented. Um, and the actual figures have been compared to approved final budget for the year, and the budget was uh, the twenty twenty-one final budget was approved on December fourteenth, twenty twenty. Um, administration does believe this to be a true representation of the state of the financials as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. However, I will note that these are currently unaudited, and we are in the middle of our, our audit, and the fin- uh audited financials will be brought likely maybe in four weeks or so for your review. So the financials indicate the following, so the financials show an overall increase of revenue for twenty twenty-one of seven hundred and forty-four thousand. Um, so some of the contributing factors were this year, so lot sales were drastically increased. Uh, it did show an increase of revenue of eight hundred and six thousand dollars, and most of this revenue does, however, come from the sale of, of one lot in the industrial area. Um, so we did attribute the last of the most funding. Um, this was dispersed back in quarter one, however, it was an unbudgeted item. Um, and so thirty-nine thousand of that went to cover costs of the COVID pandemic. Um, and then seventy-six thousand went to FCSS for community mental health and wellbeing. Um, we did uh see increased cemetery sales as well as increased building, plumbing, electrical, and gas permit sales this year as well. So some of the expenses show an overall increase of four hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine dollars um for twenty twenty-one. However, some of this, um, due to the increased lot sales, there was a corresponding increased transfer to reserve, so um, some, the, the increase to reserve totaled uh an additional one million seventy-two thousand dollars in twenty twenty-one to offset that. Um, we did still track COVID pandemic costs, so that was um just over eighty thousand dollars. There was an increase to utility cost for twenty twenty-one in the amount of a hundred and sixty-four thousand um as well as a small increase to the RCMP contract cost of sixty-nine thousand. And this did not include any um retroactive pay um for the RCMP members. So our surplus um this year is sitting at two hundred and ninety thousand dollars and two hundred and ninety thousand nineteen dollars. So, and that's just the increase for revenue, less expenses, plus our unspent contingency. So the transfer to reserves, like I said, was more than what was originally butted, uh, budgeted for. And that's comprised mainly of increased land sales and the increase to water waste water reserve. So the opening reserve balance was um fifteen point four million dollars with an N balance of just over seventeen million dollars. So that is an increase of about one point six million dollars um into the reserves. So we removed one point one out of reserves to fund the capital projects throughout the year. Um, but we did put in two point seven. So I just put a list of some of the completed capital projects in there. Um, and if you may have noticed, in the resolution, we did actually not pick where to put the surplus. But we did, I do have a, a couple of options on where we think it should go. Um, so the first option, it can go to the facility reserve to help fund the IDP project that you had previously um approved. Um, another option that we gave is to put into the land reserve, and there's two options that we can go in there for, so any future planning and development costs related to the development of the industrial um lands or any costs related to future housing developments. Thank you. So I'm, I'm looking for two motions, so one to approve the fourth quarter financials as presented, and then a second one to approve the allocation of the surplus.
And do you have a recommendation on, on where you would like to see it allocated, or you just, you just want us to pick one of those three?
I don't specifically has a, have a recommendation. I think either one of those options are going to require funding in the future, so.
Okay. So I would have someone make the first motion, please.
Mayor Barkley, I would move that council accept the twenty twenty-one fourth quarter financials as presented.
Okay, any discussion, questions, Counsel Bates?
Yeah, just one question. It, it won't affect. You mentioned that, that nothing yet has been determined for the RCMP back pay. Is there any updates that we're getting, or is there any, any promised date down the road that we might hear something, or?
All right, go ahead.
Sorry, Eric, you, you have this information?
Um, well, we did get um an email, I think, from AM. Um, I don't know if it was a couple, a couple of weeks ago now, um, with an update that's saying the two point five percent um interest or back pay per year is not realistic, and it's actually closer to three point two five up to four percent, I believe. So I actually did do some calculations from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-one. And now I just used it based on what our total contract cost was, and I did commute uh do that for the last six years. And I, I'm sorry, I don't have the number on the top of my head, but I, it was over that, just over that two hundred thousand dollar mark, I believe.
So it's not four hundred?
It was around two twenty or something that you, you think you remember.
But beyond that, there's no further indication of anybody paying it but us.
Well, actually, we're, they're asking us not to pay it.
That's, that's correct.
That's AM.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so did we vote on your motion, Counsel Wing? No, okay. Okay, all in favor of Counsel Wing's motion, thank you. And then we need a second motion to where we want to put the, the surplus.
Uh, I would accept what is being suggested, because I think we're going to need obviously the money in either facility or land reserve. You could split it, or you could put it all in one, or, or you could put it all in general, it doesn't matter to me.
We, yeah, nice motion, yeah.
I will make the motion that you can defeat if you wish, that we put it all in the facility reserve.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Kate, carried. We'll move on to eight point one correspondence. It was pretty light this week. This was the press release that they put out last week, so good news. Eventually. So we'll, um, just have somebody make a motion that we accept the correspondence and information, please.
Mayor Barkley, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Dunham, all in favor? Thank you. And we'll start with our council reports, and we'll start with Counsel Harrison today.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Barkley. Uh, I attended the seniors housing via Zoom series one. And uh it was about an hour, an hour and a half of some really good discussion. Was there more to the list and relatively new uh what they were talking about to me, but a number of things that sort of jumped out at me. Uh, one of the things by twenty forty-six, one in five will be a senior, you know, we're under five people by twenty thousand forty-six, so, you know, that's twenty-five years away, so that's not very far when you when you look at it. So we need to be thinking strategically about, I believe, what we need to do for our aging population. I got a definition of affordable housing. I, I know I've asked many times, like, affordable housing, what is that? Or what's the definition? Is it? And affordable housing means different things to different people, right? It's all relative. But the definition that uh the, this group uses is spends less than thirty percent of its pre-tax funds on shelter. So now you've, you've sort of got a definition of, or at least I do of what affordable housing is, so. I also attended the budget analysis by Alberta Council uh there again to listen of their interpretation of what the budget twenty twenty-two looked like. Interesting. And I attended the home show in Calgary, which was, which was very enlightening. There's a number of people in Calgary that come to Inisville quite regular. They, they came by our booth there and they, oh, yeah, I come there to golf. You know, I come here, I got property at Glennerford Lake, so there's a number, you know, we're certainly on the map. But there was nobody that was looking for vacant lots that I, I saw maybe on Saturday. You sold some land, I, I don't know. But uh, no, other than that, uh, and coming up this week, it's just, it's gonna be a fairly quiet week, so um, that's all I have, Mayor Barkley, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Maseros.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Uh, last week I went to the joint youth planning agreement webinar, Craig Teal. Uh, there's a lot of information, history about the agreement. And information about the MGA and Education Act in regards to school site planning. There's a lot of information. He did suggest, um, or he did offer that he would come to give council a webinar, which I thought was a good idea, but Director Jenkins suggested that she could give um a summary of the webinar, and I think that's, that's a great idea if if Director Ja- Jenkins wouldn't mind doing that for council. She Heidi? Also attended the municipal budget summary, um, the Alberta Municipal Budget Summary and the Calgary Home Show, which I agree was a lot of fun. And right across from our booth, there was uh another booth with an infill developer. I'm not sure if you noticed it or went to talk to them, and unfortunately, they don't do, they don't go outside of um downtown Calgary, but uh, yeah, we'd like to find someone like that for around here. That's it for me, thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Maseros and Counsel Dunham.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Last Friday, on the twenty-fifth, I also attended the Alberta Council Budget Analysis as well as the Alberta Municipalities Budget. I think, I can't remember the gentleman's name, summed it up pretty much, that budget was pretty boring, but there were a few things that really stood out for me um that I was happy to see, and that's obviously the funding for the Red Deer Hospital, um, additional funding for addiction, mental health um as well as uh trying to find a way to find new doctors, nurses for rural communities. So those are just a few things that stood out for me. I as well was able to go to the home show in Calgary and I was uh sad after I finished my two hours with Ken that I walked around in the only other rural community that I found was Sundry, which actually surprised me, thought there would have been more, more of us out there trying to tap into the Calgary market, and that was it for me.
Thank you, and Counsel Wing.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. I wanted to, yeah, go back to last week's agendas and priorities committee meeting. I enjoyed the delegations that presented us with the information and the request for support. Um, I enjoyed having the community here in that, in that, from I enjoyed having the community here in that, in that, from that perspective. I attended what will hopefully be the last virtual meeting of Parkland Regional Library System Board of Directors on the twenty-fourth of February. Always good to hear about the successes and challenges from throughout the system. Very good to hear about the work of the advocacy committee that was established three years ago. Certainly, when I look at the library in Innesville, I'm very proud of the things that they are accomplishing, but I'm also very aware of the need to the need for them to have resources to continue their work. So that will be important to keep in front of us moving forward. Last Friday afternoon, I joined all of my colleagues in the provincial budget meetings, analysis, and webinar. My key takeaway from that was remember, is flat the new up? No, flat is the new down. Yeah, so when somebody says, oh, it's good, we're flat, we didn't get cut. It's like, no. With inflation and everything else that's been going on, you're not winning if you're, if you have flat funding for an extended period of time. This morning, I met with Director Jenkins and the Chamber of Commerce President Manager to discuss the Tuesday market on Maine and how it will evolve this year. So we've identified significant work that needs to happen very, in a very short period of time. So we'll keep you up to date on that. And then I just brought my soapbox along because I wanted to make a comment. I'd like to comment about our strategic planning session on February the fourteenth and fifteenth. As there seems to be some misunderstanding in the community about the work that we did. Immediately after the election last fall, council and administration did a comprehensive review of the strategic plan that was adopted in twenty eighteen. Understanding the work that had been completed and the outcomes that had been realized. We all appreciated that we had that discussion in advance with the budget deliberations. So the new strategic plan that we worked through two weeks ago is to replace that plan that is in fact almost four years old and consider the next four to five years and the bodies of work that we will complete through that time. We are awaiting the draft plan in the coming weeks, and once adopted, it will be posted on the town's website, as is our practice. The website is a wealth of information for our community, and I encourage our citizens to go there and read about the good things that are happening in Innesville. This was not a follow-up to the economic development planning that resulted in the report from thirteen ways in December of twenty twenty. That's focusing on economic development from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-six. Just an important differentiation between a strategic plan and economic development plan. I appreciate that it can be confusing in our community where there are numerous plans being referred to and worked with. So I just wanted to take a minute to just clarify that, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Counselor Wing. Counselor Bates?
I look forward to hearing Counselor Wing's experience with the first live Parkland Regional Library. Okay, and yeah, the, I saw the other thing too on Facebook, but I did attend the MacGyver telephone town hall that was, I think, last Thursday. And it was interesting always is to hear other municipalities voice their wants and and needs and lots of comments from Mr. MacGyver that that wasn't in the budget or, you know, this is a good answer. This one isn't. And no, it was, it was interesting. I enjoyed it. I did attend the home show on Friday and excuse me, was only held up by one convoy on the way there and then two on the way over to Cochrane afterwards. The sad part is the one on the way there was also holding up an ambulance with its lights on. Yeah, I, oh, at the home show, I think we could probably look hard at our booth and maybe spend a little bit more money on it. We're, I found we were mistaken a few times for the golf course because they have a big banner in there and and good on them. I mean, that helps. We get lots of, I found it was very hard to find somebody that wasn't interested in something and in a spill. And the golf course is a good draw. I drove by on the weekend and remember last fall mentioning the the signs in front of the library with horrible shape, they've the two big pencil pillars and I think that's a facility upgrade that we're going to have to spend a little bit of money on and just didn't want it to be forgotten. Have M P C coming this week, my first one in a long time, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Bates. So I listened to the Alberta Council and Alberta. Oh, I forgot about Counselor Highstead. Should we, should we, should we carry on? Sorry. Sorry, I'm sorry, Counselor Highstead. Deepest apologies to you.
It's twice in four months. I think you're picking on me. I'm so quiet. I I want to, yeah, I want to thank Counselor Wing for actually giving an example of the strategy plans and and what the town has been working on over the number of years. And I think through our strategic sessions, we should commend our administration for the work that they've done the previous four years as well. I guess this week for myself, I got the historical village meeting. I believe it's on Wednesday. I'm looking at Dawn, who's the treasurer. And I was at the A M A review with some of you on, was that Friday afternoon? Oh, man, time flies. And as to the announcement, I think it's great that we got, you know, there was an announcement for a new hospital in central Alberta. The biggest thing that I had mentioned to some people have mentioned it to me, it takes, you got to have good staff and and well-trained staff in a facility like that. So I hope that any government that's going to be in power realizes that when you're going to build a facility that nice and big. So that's all I have. Thanks, Mayor Gene.
Okay, and I do apologize. So I listened to the Alberta Council and Alberta Municipalities Budget Analysis on Friday, also was on the Minister MacGyver's Town Hall, which was, was good, and the the home show in Calgary. So I want to say a special mention to Ken because I think that's kind of his calling is, is being the the home show guy. He's excellent there and it was lots of fun. And I was going to say to Counselor Harrison, we sold four lots, but that would be a lie, so I I won't. But no, I think it was good. It was good exposure for Innesville, and it was a, it was a fun day. So thank you very much. So we will move now on to upcoming events. And just have a motion to accept this as information, please.
Mayor Barkley, I'll move that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Dunham. All in favor? Thank you. And then we'll have a motion to go back into closed camera again.
I'd say move, have we moved back into camera?
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Okay, thank you.